Six o'clock PM, and I ask Clerk Simmski for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerk's here, Trustee Eddington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo is absent tonight. Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and I'd ask our Eagle Scout to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And like to welcome everyone, and moving on to open forum, I do have, an open forum is, if there's something that's not on the agenda, now's the time to address the board. I have one request. Patrick Combs?
Comer.
Comer.
Yes, sir.
Announcement of public document. Documents, document.
Documentary. My name's Patrick Comer. About four weeks ago, I saw an advertisement, I'm sorry, a front page news story in the Chicago Tribune about the situation of coral in our oceans, which compelled me to find a movie called Chasing Coral. And I was impressed enough with the movie that I sought out permission to show it here in Downers Grove in a couple of weeks, on Saturday, I have some information here. I emailed to each one of the trustees and Mr. Mayor this morning, some information about that. I neglected to include Mr. May and Mr. Zemanek, sorry, Zemanek, sorry, but I have a copy here for each one of you, if you wish. The documentary details the situation of coral in our oceans, following the story of a man who was an advertising person, quit his job, and took an interest in diving in coral, and pursued this, and now has made a national effort for it. So I'd like to welcome everyone, including those here in attendance. It's at the Downers Grove Library on Saturday, the first of February, at 10:00 AM. We'll have also in attendance a research marine biologist from John Shedd Aquarium, Dr. Ross Cunningham, who will answer questions and make comments after the film.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you very much. May I hand these to-
You can give it to-
Right behind you.
Mr. McIntyre there, and he'll take care of handing it out.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you. Seeing nobody else for open forum, I'll close it, move on to reports. I'd like at this time to call up Larry McIntyre to talk about an exciting new exhibit.
Thank you, Mayor, Village Board. As you are all aware, in 2004, Westmont Special Events was created, and a year later, that organization created the Muddy Waters exhibit over at Westmont Center. And right away, we received a lot of artifacts on loan, and that exhibit's been in place for about 14 years now. But tonight, we're going to talk about a new artifact that's going to be added. If I could invite up Joe Morganfield and Keith Wright. Joe is the youngest son of Muddy Waters and a longtime Westmont resident. Many people in town, including Trustee Eddington, know him better for his basketball.
He was just talking about it.
But actually, Joe's a great singer, and in recent years, he's put together a great blues band. They've been playing around quite a bit. And Keith is also a graduate of Westmont High School and created a project. And maybe, Keith, I'll let you talk a little bit about what you did with the sign.
I've been a big blues fan, actually, since I was a kid, been influenced by your dad.
Thank you.
It was fantastic. And what I wanted to do was have something to remember the blues by, and so Larry was courteous enough to let me meet quite a few of the performers at the Taste of Westmont over the various years that performed the blues on Muddy Waters Night. And they were gracious enough, I had the sign in my possession, and they were gracious enough to sign it. And I'd like to have, it's really no use to me to have it sitting in my basement where it can't be appreciated, so what I wanted to do with the courtesy of Larry is actually lend it to the Muddy Waters Museum.
Good, thank you.
Let everybody enjoy it.
So to add to the excitement, Joe has not yet signed the sign, so we're going to ask him to sign it right now, if that's all right.
And as Joe's signing it, I have to say he's one of the top three. I won't say two, because I want to leave myself open for another high school basketball players at Westmont High School.
Exactly.
Leaving one spot open, so. You're in the top three.
I remember as a kid, the whole town was abuzz when that team was so good. It was just decorated everywhere, and it was, you know, such a different time how they went about it.
I think we went to every game with the kids.
Jim, 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 they might understand the Eagle Scout built this box. They might understand the Eagle Scout built this one flag box.
He thinks so.
Maybe he still is. Wow. Pretty impressive.
I don't have to tell you twice, right?
Twist.
Joe, do you want to make any comments about our living in Westmont? Blues music and everything?
I remember when we first moved to Westmont, '73, from out of Chicago, it was like a shell shocker to me, first time I ever heard crickets. But this town's always been good to us. I remember we had to fire it at home, and just the people just embraced us, and all the help that we got, it was incredible. We were a little nervous, being only one of the black families in town, but this town just embraced us, and we just had no problems with anyone. So, Westmont's a great town, I got a son who lives here now, so he knows the story of Westmont, that's why he moved in himself. But a lot of people I know, some I don't. But Westmont's always been good to me, and I'm just grateful for having me here to sign this, so thank you guys.
And thank you, Joe. And to go along with that, Joe did perform at the opening of Raising Cane, which was Tuesday. And I just present, this was presented today, we had a second ribbon cutting, they are open. And I understand there was like 300 people at the grand opening on, and again, Raising Cane's at 63rd and Cass, just about a block west by the Walgreens. This morning, we had a ribbon cutting, and I see Frank Trout there, he was attending, so, yeah. So, please stop by there, it's very popular. And I'm going to ask Larry to come back up, because we've got to talk about our Eagle Scout.
Thank you. Actually, I'm going to just quickly invite up Bob Fleck and Jacob Bearden to talk about their project. I guess we'll start with Jacob.
Hi, I'm-
That's cool.
Oh, I see, okay. I'm Jacob Bearden, I'm a senior at Westmont High School, and I'm going to be going to College of DuPage soon. I've been a boy in this, I've been involved in scouting since I was in first grade, and I'm working towards getting my Eagle project, or my Eagle rank, and obviously, the biggest part of that is getting a project done. And I was having trouble thinking about what I was going to do, but my aunt saw a box in her, where she lives, and it was for retiring or for donating flags that are old or aren't being used anymore. And then the scouts that ran it, they took the flags and they retired them in a proper way. And I thought it would be really cool, because I know that we don't have a service like this in Westmont, and I know that the Park District gets a lot of questions about it, like, where can I do this, where can I do that? And I also think it's really important, because obviously, the flag is a symbol of our nation and where we live, and I think it's important to respect that. And as you can see, I made that one, and I made another one. The first one went in the Park District, and this one is going to the Police and Fire Department. And I'd like to thank the Westmont Park District and Mr. Fleck for helping me, because they gave me tips about talking to the press, the press, giving me a space to build, and obviously, I'm going to put it there, so that's nice to them. I think that's it.
Well done.
I'd just like to compliment Jacob and all the Eagle Scouts. Year in, year out, we have Eagle Scouts come to us looking for a project. Sometimes, we help them come up with the idea. Jacob was ready to go and had the idea in place. It was a perfect match. Just so happens, the Ronald Gunther Administrative Center at the Park District is also home to our American Legion post, so it's a perfect connection, and the Legion sponsors our Eagle Scouts and Boy Scouts here in Westmont. So we are more than happy to help, and I'm really impressed with what the Scouts do. They not realize it, but when they do these projects, all the planning, the orchestration, the delegation, the proposals, it's all about not only giving them tremendous skills for the future, but they're trying to build leaders, and they really do an excellent job with the Scouts. Congratulations.
Yes, this is, last week, we met with them over at the Park District building, and we agreed to support, continue supporting our Scouts. And what we're going to do is when we collect these flags, once a year, as we approach Flag Day in June, we'll collect all the flags together, and we'll have a memorial flag burning. That is the way you properly destroy an American flag. And we'll probably be doing this in conjunction with the Downers Grove American Legion post also. So we'll be looking forward to that in June, we'll be working with the Scouts, and this is just a fantastic project that this young man took on, and anything we can do to support the Scouts, we're certainly there for them. Thank you.
Again, thank the American Legion for taking the troop under your wing several years ago when they no longer could be part of the church, so really appreciate that.
I think at this time, we'd like to bring people up for a photo, all members of the American Legion, Police and Fire, and Jacob, Mayor.
It's a nice bar. I couldn't do that. You mentioned pulling out a business application, right?
Okay, I'll have Bruce come up.
Baby shower. It was just, no. I would, for the, did you make the airplanes out of?
Yeah.
And the Alfred bed. It was already made, you had the paint. I think it is.
No, I know it.
The guy did the striders.
Yeah, it's like, really good.
We've been very fortunate with the scouting program to have Eagle Scouts do a lot of projects, either with the Park District or the Village, and it's a great leadership opportunity for them. My last item, just kind of share your vision or your future to Westmont. Part of our final piece of the mural that we started four years ago for our 100th anniversary, which will be in 2021, we're asking the public to give to us what they feel Westmont will be like in the future. And an artist is going to take all that and use it for her mural, the last segment. And it'll be unveiled in November at our birthday celebration. So that's all I have, and I'm going to turn to Clerk Simmski. I just have a couple of announcements to make. Westmont Office, our village offices will be closed Monday, January 20th, for Martin Luther King Day. Recycle and garbage will not be affected at all. And the Citizen of the Year, we're taking applications for that, at that time, the chamber is, we encourage everyone to nominate individuals who dedicate themselves to giving back. Nominate someone through the chamber website, so if you would do that. And then Larry McIntyre, can you hear me? Larry? And January 22nd, we will be having our Public Information Committee meeting, so do you want to speak about that at all, sir?
That'll be next Wednesday, 10:00 AM, here at Village Hall, and that's a meeting in which we invite all of our community organizations to come together and share upcoming events and things like that, so I want to make sure everyone who's interested, please attend.
Okay, thanks. And that's all I have. I'll turn over to Trustee Eddington.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. First one is, last night, some of us were able to attend the annual DuPage Mayors and Managers Legislative Dinner, which is also attended by several of our state senators and state representatives, as well as a bunch of other people. It was probably the biggest turnout we've ever had. And I just wanted to comment on the fact that the theme, after dinner, when the legislators, and we had legislators from both sides of the aisle, who talked about what was accomplished in last year's legislative session, and the cooperation, that they were giving each other and the respect that they gave each other, that really, we haven't heard or seen for about four years. And things got accomplished by the end, by May, when they were finally getting ready to close out, that a lot got accomplished in this last year, including a balanced budget, which some of us have never seen for several years because of infighting and some of the silliness. So it was hard, it made us, I think, all feel fairly good to listen to the cooperation and what they were telling us. Now we go forward, they go back in session probably soon, and we gave to them last night our agenda from Mayors and Managers, and we also got the IML's agenda, and one of the things that between the two of them is there's a lot of non-home rule thoughts that will be presented through legislators in this upcoming year to give us a little more in the way of power and revenue as a non-home rule community. So again, those were positive, and Legislative Committee will give you in about two weeks, and I'll just keep everybody informed as more goes on. And the only other thing I have is this evening, we had the Community Development Committee meeting, and several things later in the agenda tonight, there will be a request for a life safety grant and a facade grant for Go Polar Cryotherapy at 230 North Cass, and that was recommended to go forward. We talked a lot about thoughts that anybody might have with regard to businesses using their sidewalks in front of their business, maybe from time to time, if they want to put out a table, promote their business, you know, how can that be done? How can we make that work without creating problems with ADA or handicapped folks, and also in the wintertime, not creating a problem so that we can clean those streets with our sweepers and the other things, or the sidewalks? But anyone who might have any thoughts, I think it's a good idea, especially when businesses reach an anniversary and they want to do something, there ought to be a way for us to work with them to be able to put something out in front and kind of promote themselves. I remember years ago, when we had, they used to periodically do street sales, and it was fun, and you added something to the sidewalk area, but I think people enjoyed it. So it's something we want to work on. And then the, we talked about a reviewing of Building and Fire Code amendments, and how that affects new developers and people who come in and want to remodel. And then finally, the Community Development Department gave all of us a very comprehensive year-end report on all the activities that have gone on down in Community Development in 2019. Permits were up, fees were up, the amount of property in 2019 was up like almost $30 million from the value of property in 2018. There's a lot going on in this town, folks, and a lot of positives. We also had several code enforcement issues that were taken care of and resolved, from anywhere from people not cutting their grass to other problems, and most of those got taken care of without even having to go to adjudication, although a couple did have to go. But a very comprehensive report, this will be, that report, Bruce, will eventually, will that get on the webpage?
Which report is that?
The year-year-end.
Can we put that on the webpage, Jeff?
Yeah, so if anybody has an opportunity to review it, I think you'll be very surprised at, for this size community, the activity that's going on, both in residential and especially in commercial. We're vibrant, we are moving forward, we have a lot going on, and hopefully, down the road, I think what we're going to see here in the next year or two on 63rd Street is as more of that redevelopment comes in at the, at the center, right at the corner of 63rd and Cass, I think you're going to see several of these other properties who have been sitting for a while, all of a sudden start getting some traction to do something else, to improve that. So a lot going on all over town, the Nader Torium is close, I think they're supposed to be finished, May, June? June, yeah. So again, a lot of very positive things, folks, and it was really a quality report, and we thank them for everything that they do. And with that, that's all I have, sir.
And again, just to remind everyone, Jim is our appointment to the Legislative Committee for DuPage Mayors and Managers, and he's monitoring legislation that would affect Westmont. So he's been doing a tremendous job, and he's on that for life. And Trustee Guzzo is absent, so I'm going to ask Trustee Barry to not only do your report, but hers too.
Okay. If I need help, Chief Riley, you can bail me out, okay? Public Safety Committee meeting is, their next meeting is February 27th at 4:30, that'll be before our Village Board meeting right here in the Village Hall. The Citizens' Fire Academy, the signup is now open for the 2020 Citizen Fire Academy. Academy runs March 25th to April 22nd. This program is designed to help citizens better understand the fire department's firefighting and rescue operations, as well as the multitude of services it provides to the community. That's everything, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the care packages, Westmont firefighters made 100 care packages with funds raised by selling T-shirts at community events. The care packages will be sent overseas to Afghanistan. And here's some visuals showing the department doing that. And then the Police Department, again, just reiterating the Eagle Scout project with the retired flags that we saw earlier here today, so.
I saw last night on TV. The Westmont Fire-
Oh, the Chicago Fire Room was last-
I did not see it there, I was at an officers' meeting with my staff, and I hope to see it tonight when I get home.
Yeah, it was.
Don't spoil it for them. Okay. Moving on to my report, then, Mr. Mayor. We had an economic development meeting on January 8th. We had a proposed Windy City Cannabis to go into the old daycare center just east of Walgreens. This would kind of be between Walgreens and Las Palmas, and kind of segue to Las Palmas is moving to that location, as we've heard a couple times. The new medical center is underway, we've seen Major, and that complex get tore down. And Larry, you know, hats off to you, we were able to save a couple of those businesses, Las Palmas, and Blue Village is moving to Chicago Avenue, and they've opened this weekend. And I've heard a lot of positives about the way the new record store is laid out and how they can shop, so I know Rick Dear is very positive about the new store. And our next meeting will be February 5th at 9:00 AM here at the Westmont Village Hall. We meet at the Executive Room right next door. And then lastly, I have an overhead for the Westmont Rotary Club. They are doing a fundraiser that includes, I might have an overhead, that includes Wolves tickets, and it's against the Rockford Icehogs, which is the Chicago Blackhawks minor league team. So there's a couple packages, there's a lot of different options, and again, you can contact the Rotary Club or any Rotarian to get more information on this. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Do you, from the P&amp;Z meeting, from-
Oh, wait a second, I had another page. Hold on a second. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I went over. So I'm not done yet. Exciting, and Larry, if you need to help me, please feel free to add anything, but we have our exciting Westmont Restaurant Week coming up. This is our fourth annual already, and the Westmont Restaurant Week is being held Thursday, January 30th, through Sunday, February 9th. And then you will watch for the Westmont Restaurant Week promo on ABC 7, 11:00 AM News on January 30th. And, you know, this has been a great event through the chamber, and just really, I know the restaurants and a lot of the residents really appreciate the Restaurant Week, and it seems to be growing every year, and so look for that coming up here in just a week or two. And then we had, as we've heard earlier, we had the Raising Cane's ribbon cutting, and it was mentioned to me that this is as good as a Portillo's, the way that the line was outside the door, so I hope that that continues. And we will also have another ribbon cutting on Friday at the new Rising Goddess location at 208 East Chicago Avenue. And that, again, is on Friday, Larry, do we have a time on that?
11:00 AM.
At 11:00 AM. Now that's all I have, Mr.
and rescue operations, as well as the multitude of services it provides to the community. That's everything, chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the care packages, Westmont firefighters made 100 care packages with funds raised by selling T-shirts at community events. The care packages will be sent overseas to Afghanistan. And here's some visuals showing the department doing that. And then the Police Department, again, just reiterating the Eagle Scout project with the retired flags that we saw earlier here today, so.
I saw last night on TV.
Oh, the Chicago Fire.
I did not see it there. I was at an office meeting with my staff, and I hope to see it tonight when I get home.
Yeah, it was.
Don't spoil it for them. Yeah. Okay. Moving on to my report, Mr. Mayor. We had an Economic Development Meeting on January 8th. We had a proposed Windy City Cannabis to go into the old daycare center just east of Walgreens. This would kind of be between Walgreens and Las Palmas, and kind of segue to Las Palmas is moving to that location, as we've heard a couple times. The new medical center is underway, we've seen major, and that complex get tore down. And Larry, you know, hats off to you, we were able to save a couple of those businesses, Las Palmas and Blue Village is moving to Chicago Avenue, and they've opened this weekend. And I've heard a lot of positives about the way the new record store is laid out and how they can shop. So I know Rick Dear is very positive about the new store. And our next meeting will be February 5th at 9:00 a.m. here at the Westmont Village Hall. We meet at the Executive Room right next door. And then lastly, I have an overhead for the Westmont Rotary Club. They are doing a fundraiser that includes, I might have an overhead, that includes Wolves tickets, and it's against the Rockford Icehogs, which is the Chicago Blackhawks minor league team. So there's a couple packages, there's a lot of different options, and again, you can contact the Rotary Club or any Rotarian to get more information on this. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Do you, from the P&amp;Z meeting, from?
Oh, wait a second, I had another page. Hold on a second. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I went over. So I'm not done yet. Exciting, and Larry, if you need to help me, please feel free to add anything. But we have our exciting Westmont Restaurant Week coming up. This is our fourth annual already. And the Westmont Restaurant Week is being held Thursday, January 30th through Sunday, February 9th. And then you will watch for the Westmont Restaurant Week promo on ABC 7, 11 a.m. News on January 30th. And you know, this has been a great event through the chamber and just really, I know the restaurants and a lot of the residents really appreciate the Restaurant Week, and it seems to be growing every year. And so look for that coming up here in just a week or two. And then we had, as we've heard earlier, we had the Raising Cane's ribbon cutting, and it was mentioned to me that this is as good as a Portillo's, the way that the line was outside the door. So I hope that that continues. And we will also have another ribbon cutting on Friday at the new Rising Goddess location at 208 East Chicago Avenue. And that again is on Friday. Larry, do we have a time on that?
11:00 a.m.
At 11:00 a.m. Now that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to call Bruce up as far as planning and zoning?
And I have that for Bruce, that's right. So Bruce, if you want to talk to us about the 63rd and Ridge project that was in front of P&amp;Z a week ago.
So very briefly, I think you're all familiar with the proposal for an apartment building in the southeast quadrant of Ridge and 63rd that was considered at a public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously that all of the various approvals that were needed for that project be denied. After that meeting, the developer met with myself and the Village Planner, Nalini, and informed us that they were withdrawing their application. So after discussing it with the Village Attorney, what that means is it will not end up on a Village Board agenda, and it will not be an item that will require any action by the Village Board. It has been withdrawn, and it is basically not going forward.
Thank you, Bruce.
Can we discuss some ways to let the residents know of that in case they don't hear this meeting? And there are a couple different options for, so we don't keep getting emails about the project.
And it was a great job by the planning and zoning. I think they really heard the residents, you know, as much as we need that density down there in 63rd to make that commercial corridor work, this just wasn't the project that the residents wanted there. So you know, that's how we move forward in democracy.
They were heard. Trustee Addington.
Just, John, quick question. When a developer does something like this where they ask, they formally ask for withdrawal, is it dead? What happens if they all of a sudden, a month from now, say, you know, I changed my mind?
We consider it dead once they withdraw. I would like to get that in writing, but at that, if they change their mind, they'd have to go through the process again.
All over again. Okay. Thank you very, that's what I thought, but good to know that part too. Thank you.
I think I'm really done this time, unless you want me to take Nero's or something?
No, I'll ask trustee Nero to give us his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is March 26th, 4:30, Village Hall, right here before our Board meeting. If you haven't driven by the new Public Works facility, please do, it's going up relatively quickly ahead of schedule, and it looks great. And another quick update, there'll be something to pop up on our census. By March 12th, households in the whole country will receive a letter to participate in the census. We are, of course, encouraging everybody to respond as soon as possible. Please do. There's going to be quite a bit of information all over with the business community, different governmental entities, you name it, they're going to have information. So if you need something, ask anybody at the Village can help, of course, and just about any other governing body. It's extremely important, and that's all I have.
Do you know if they're still accepting applications for people to work?
I'm sure they are.
I saw new signs go up on parkways.
Because at a meeting we attended last week, they're paying $29.50 an hour for individuals that work on the census, so.
And 58 cents. 58 cents a mile and $29.50.
Yes, yes. So if anybody's interested, please apply.
No elected officials.
That's right.
That's right. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. The next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be held February 13th at 4:30 in this, just before the Village Board meeting, so you're all welcome to attend. And then again, the census promotional materials that are coming out right now are so vital, I don't think people understand that this is not a policing issue. This is, we don't care whether you're a citizen, what we're questioning is, please get your head counts right. If you're not counted, the federal government leaves money on the table and does not send it to Westmont, where we could really use the money. So again, I ask that you get counted, that you make sure everybody in your family and friends get counted. Don't leave money on the table, and let's get everybody in town counted. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Westmont First will meet Tuesday, January 21st instead of this evening at 6:00 p.m. in the library, according to our notes here. But anyway, it's Tuesday, January 21st. Again, we continue to do our work on the census. The Environmental Improvement Committee will meet in February, and there's a couple, they're always busy. There is two things that are critical to them. The Holiday Lights Recycling has the two drop-off locations, and they end on January 31st. And tomorrow is the last day for your Christmas tree to be put out for the tree recycling and remove all the items off that tree. That is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on to items to be removed from the consent agenda. I would ask a trustee if they'd do me a favor, ask to remove the Park District waiver from the consent agenda. Will somebody do that?
I'll make that motion.
Second. You just requested, don't need a motion. Is there any other item that any board member would like removed? Seeing none, I'd ask manager May to please read.
First on the consent agenda this evening are the Village Board minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the Village Board meeting held December 19, 2019. Next is finance ordinance number 17, in the amount of $3,608,384.11. We have five purchase orders. Our first one, Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, $390,411.40. This is the annual insurance funding, it's a self-insured pool. Next is ETSB, DuPage County Finance, $22,210.78. ETSB is the Emergency Telephone System Board Required Contribution. Next is Commonwealth Edison, $36,729.41 for work related to the Public Works Facility, the new electric service. Next one is Sam Serra Network, $24,348. This is the vehicle logging system that you discussed at the last Public Works Committee meeting. This is not a budgeted item, it's marked as such, but it is, you know, accounted for. This is the fraction to get the startup started, and when we get into the budget discussions next time, you'll see the balance of the vehicles in there. Fifth purchase order, Corin Main LP, $57,082. This is for water meter purchase. The total of the purchase orders is $530,817.59. That brings the total of the purchase orders with the finance ordinance to $4 million. I don't know what it is, there's too many digits in my notes here. That's too many numbers. You will have to add them together yourself.
I think it's $4,139,201.70.
All right. I'm going to cross that eight out of there. Thank you, sir. Next, we have community events. The first one is, which was removed from the consent agenda, so it can be addressed individually next. So not on the consent agenda. And then we have the downtown development grant request that was identified earlier. Board to consider an ordinance approving the downtown development grant request in the amount of $7,655 for improvements at 230 North Cass Avenue in the B1 Downtown Limited Business District. That concludes their consent agenda, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve on the question. Anybody seeing on roll call, please?
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo is absent. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll go to the item that was removed on the community events, the Westmont Park District Winter Beer Fest, fee waivers. Board to consider ordinance approving a waiver of fees for the following items, special event liquor license fee, temporary use permit, and a tent permit. I think we have with us tonight the executive director, Mr. Fleck, and would you want to come up and, or Dustin can come up and tell us a little bit about that before we vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Village Board. So the Westmont Winter Beer Festival, this is our second year doing this event. Last year, we had 555 people attend the event. This year, we're going to have 25 different local craft breweries from around the area participate in the event. We will have a variety of food trucks for them as well, fire pits, and also heated tents. So it's a wonderful event, it's a great little kind of get out and do something during the cold of winter, and it's definitely something that we're looking forward to hosting this year.
I just want to give credit to Dustin. Dustin is a craft beer enthusiast. This was his idea last year, and I continue to get so many compliments from residents who really look forward to this event now that it's coming back. It is an opportunity for so many people who don't see each other for a long time, or who have kids now that are in college or older, and they just don't get to see some of their old family, friends, the way they used to. It's a, it really is a Westmont reunion, and we're also drawing in a tremendous amount of people from around the area, as we now know from the ticket sales, because we do chart that information. So it's got a big reach, and we're going to start advertising as well on ESPN AM 1000 Radio this year.
Now, date again?
It is February 8th. The Saturday will always be, per Dustin's suggestion, the Saturday after the Super Bowl, because there's nothing going on.
Good. And Bob, you said 25 local, do we have our local Westmont breweries? Are they?
I'm going to let Dustin answer that, because he deals with all the breweries.
Yes, yes, they will be entertained, so Scallywags and Whiskey Hill are both in attendance. I've built a very strong relationship with both of those entities, so absolutely, they will be.
Very good. That's great.
So this item, the event has already been approved, the liquor license is already in order. The item tonight is the actual fee waiver for the associated fees with this, was which something you would typically consider for another taxing body.
The same as last year, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made, second to approve. Any other comments? Trustees, anybody in the audience? Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes. Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Mayor and Board, thank you very much. I just want to add this one other note. I want it to be known that when I was in fifth and sixth grade, I was the manager of the Westmont High School Varsity Basketball Team when Joe Morganfield was a junior and senior. I proudly picked up his sweaty towel and warm-ups after every game, gave him his water. So I'd like to think I have a small part in his success during that time, and I have a varsity pin to prove it.
Thank you for that.
That's a good story, Bob.
Moving on, new business.
It's a village, right?
Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission appointment. Board to consider a motion confirming my appointment of Allison Clemmons to the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think we've had a vacancy, and we've done interviews, and tonight recommending Allison to be appointed, and I'm going to ask our chairperson if he could come up to the podium and introduce her and have her come to the podium and say she is the best Medicare insurance person around.
Well, certainly, Mr. Mayor and Board, it's my pleasure to introduce Allison Clemmons and welcome to the Board.
Thank you.
And indeed.
Now you get to tell us about yourself.
Sure. Thank you for, I'm honored to be appointed to the planning and zoning, I'm a resident of Westmont, I've been for like three years prior to that, Downers Grove, but have been involved with the Chamber prior to that for quite a few years as a business owner. And I also have a business downtown Westmont, Clemmons Enterprises, as he said, you know, I guess the best Medicare person. But I love what I do, and I am committed to the community, I just renewed my lease for three more years, and I just love the town, so I'm looking forward to.
What's your role in the Chamber?
Chamber, I'm the vice president, and I'm also the chair of the Senior Resource Committee. So I've been doing that, and then a year from now, I'll be the president of the Chamber.
And I'm looking forward to filling that spot. entertain a motion to approve the appointment?
Motion to approve, Nero, second, Addington.
Motion made, second. Any other questions? Comments?
Thank you. Great, great choice. I know Allison, probably 25-plus years now, I guess, as time goes, and we're kind of neighbors in, you know, alley neighbors, and just a great choice, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Doug, if he's still here, Doug, Bruce, and manager May for assisting me in the interview process. We've done it as a team, and I'm very happy that Allison agreed to serve. So I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Motion passes. I wanted to do that and not ask you, you attended last meeting, right?
Yes, I did.
And you still want to do it? You're in now, so it doesn't matter. All right, thank you.
Someone like Allison coming on this committee, for those who understand what went on in their last planning and zoning, that's why we need these kind of quality people, because that commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission does so much because of the way it's structured and what they do in making sure that things get done right for this town, because their recommendation holds a lot of weight with the Village Board, both on a positive and a negative basis. I can only think of one issue in all the years that I've been around that we actually didn't follow P&amp;Z's recommendation. There probably is more.
No, there's more.
Not many.
But not too many.
Yeah.
And Allison, if you ever want to meet with me to discuss zoning issues in general from a legal standpoint, standards for your decision as a commissioner, let me know, I'm happy to meet with you.
Thank you.
And again, going back to P&amp;Z and Doug's chairing it, they do all the work for the community, but really for the Village Board. So we appreciate everything you do and look forward to having your input.
Amen.
All right. Moving on, new business B, increase of available massage establishment license. Board to consider ordinance increasing the number of available massage establishment license by one to allow Beauty Concepts, 6309 Fairview Avenue, the ability to receive a license. And I got deputy liquor commissioner Mulholland.
Evening, Mayor and Village Board. Beauty Concepts is changing ownership and wishes to provide massage therapy for their customers. A background review has been conducted, and the owner and business are eligible to receive a massage establishment license. The Board is asked to increase the number of massage, available massage establishment licenses to allow Beauty Concepts the ability to receive a license and provide massage therapy services. If I can interject, group John, we would also need to decrease the number of available licenses by one, an increase to one, to allow this. It is, Beauty Concepts is an existing business in Westmont that does have a massage establishment license, just going through a change of ownership, and then we would decrease if possible, or?
It is, what we're actually doing is a little housekeeping matter, because the, previously, I think it said there were 11 licenses issued. I checked with Alicia, there's actually only nine right now, because a couple businesses have closed down. So this ordinance states that they're increasing the number to 10, so there'll be 10 active licenses if this is approved.
I forget about that when I create a thing. With me is Rashmi Patel. She's going to be, hopefully after tonight, the new owner of Beauty Concepts. Beauty Concepts is a business at 6309 Fairview, which is the south side of 63rd, east of Fairview Avenue. It has been there for some time. She's just purchasing the business, going to run it. Rashmi owns two other beauty salon businesses in the western suburbs, and will be making her home in Westmont, basically operating all three businesses out of her Westmont location. She's going to continue massage therapy services, she has one massage therapist who's licensed and was part of the background check and has passed. So with that, I'd like to introduce Rashmi Patel to tell you a little bit about Beauty Concepts.
Hello, so my name is Rashmi Patel. Actually, Beauty Concepts is already in a business for over 25 years, and the massage therapist who's been there, been doing it for 15 years. So I'm basically just want to, it's just a ownership change, it's a well-established business, so not much changes I'll be doing, I'll be just basically managing and officing from here. I am around from Downers Grove area, I've been raised, I went to Downers Grove South, so I'm very familiar with this area, and this is, it feels like my home, so I'm very excited to be a part of the Westmont community.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second. Any additional comments? Questions? And again, you're the same massage therapist that's been there for, is continuing?
Yes, yeah.
Really, it's not much of a change.
Yeah.
Just changing ownership, there's more, as John mentioned.
And we did all the background checks, so everything's good. Good. Seeing no other questions, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
When are you going to take ownership?
As soon as all this approved, then we get the license.
Okay, good.
She has, we have bumped it up, and all their inspections have been taken, and she's passed all her inspections. So she'll be meeting with Alicia down in the clerk's office tomorrow to move forward and be a new resident, our new business owner in Westmont.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, just much like P and Z, you know, Tom, we've had, we've had so many of these different things come up. The background work and everything you do, Tom, is so helpful to us and really makes our job easier. And again, you get all the bad stuff, we get, we get the easy decisions. So thank you.
I try to make it easy for you. Yeah, thanks.
Makes it easier for me, I don't know. And it's a thorough job. I mean, in the past, we used to rely on the police department to do all this, but Tom's devoted to this. It's his only part-time job, so, other than being a grandpa.
My favorite part-time job.
Yeah. So, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Trustee Mayor.
Moving on, lead water service line replacement. Board to consider ordinance amending Chapter 82, Article 2, Division 3 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances regarding private lead water service line replacement. And I'm going to turn to the attorney to give more information. Attorney Zem.
Thank you. This ordinance has gone through various iterations and changes in the recent couple days. Public Director Ramsey initially drafted this, and what it does is really recognize the hazards of lead service pipes that convey potable water to residents. And although it says on the agenda write-up that this ordinance requires property owners to replace their lead water service lines, it actually doesn't require them to do so. It encourages residents to do so. And the impetus to this is, one, the national discussion about the hazards of lead pipes, various legislation that's been kicked around the state of Illinois about addressing this potential hazard. I know Chicago's been active in trying to address this, and.
The whole state of Illinois.
The whole state of Illinois, correct. And the village is doing some water, some work to its water distribution service along Washington Street.
Washington.
Yeah, coming up, and is going out to bid in a couple of weeks on that project. And that involves switching out some lead service lines from the water main to the Buffalo Box. And in doing so, the village wants to provide an opportunity to residents in that area who have private lead service lines that run from the Buffalo Box across their private yards into their house in the water meter, to switch out those lead service lines with approved copper lines. And take advantage of some pricing cost savings that we think will be afforded to the village and thus the residents by having the contractor who's performing that work on behalf of the village also perform that work on behalf of residents. Again, it's not mandatory, it's just an option given to the residents that you can potentially save some money by having this contractor do the work. So that would be option number one. Option number two would be the residents on their own can hire a licensed plumber and have the licensed plumber remove the lead service line and replace it with a copper line. And then item, option three would be the residents who we know or have identified that have lead service lines, or they've self-identified that they have lead service lines, declining to do anything, understanding the hazards of lead pipes. But the village is not forcing a replacement on any residents, because we understand it's a cost. Initially, this ordinance had a lot of detail and even minutia in it about the type of materials that have to be used, how contractors, if a resident uses a village contractor, that they have to wear uniforms, put booties on when they access, enter your house. It was really detailed. And I think it was too much detail for an ordinance that goes into the village's code of ordinances. I met with Jim Kates and Noriel Noriega today, in Mike Ramsey's absence. They agreed to keep this ordinance simplified and allow Public Works to develop a policy and a standard agreement for homeowners to use if they're interested in this. So tonight, the request is to approve the simplified agreement and give direction and authority to Public Works to come up with that policy, consistent with the document that was in your agenda packet.
And I want to thank Trustee Barker, sent an email, and I had an opportunity to talk to staff today, and we're going to bring it up at a committee meeting, ways that the resident can be assisted in funding if needed. So we don't want to burden our residents. So we're going to talk about it at a committee and come up with a plan for.
Yeah, we have, we have more time to work on the village-wide program. We need to address this now so that we can proceed. Because when we touch, when we do a water main project, you know, we touch them and we immediately have to address it as part of that project.
And another option, which I, Manager May came up, is we contract with our local plumber. And he gives a competitive rate. They hire him rather than a contractor, because he's doing his work. So that's another option. So we're going to look into it. We'll have it at a committee meeting, so the board can address it.
And I know one option I discussed with staff was, let's say, they utilize the village contractor for the work, and it's, let's say, a $5,000 fixed fee, that the resident could pay that through their water bill over a period, you know, in monthly installments, or quarterly, whatever their water bill comes in, over a period of a couple of years.
Or are we sharing it? And then you do the balance of that, so. And thank Trustee Barker for bringing that up today.
No, thanks. It's important that we consider that side of it, and, you know, not only, it's kind of a win, because we helped them financially do that, although we get reimbursed, but then they have cleaner drinking water, so.
Oh, do I have a motion to approve?
So move, Barry.
Second, Little.
Motion made, second. On the question, Trustee Addington.
The, again, the numbers for us haven't changed, Steve, from what Mike had reported earlier, that really, in the case of Westmont, the numbers, we have a minimal number of properties that we think have lead service.
And have the numbers changed, maybe, but we're still in the process of completing the village-wide inventory. We know the, you know, the bulk of them. And in fact, they're still doing an inventory on the projects on this street where we're going to do the project, and right now, we're not aware of any, but we still have some houses to get into.
Good evening. Just real quick, as Manager May had indicated, we are still surveying all the residents in town. The unfortunate part is not everyone is forthcoming in setting up appointment, allowing us into their homes. We're at the mercy of their guidance to allow us into the homes.
But it's really homes that were built prior to?
Yes.
1960s, 1970?
Yeah, whenever we had the building code changed, when we required copper.
So if you have a home that's newer than 70, 75, you're probably okay anyway.
No oak wood or anything like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And to Bruce's point, you know, those are older homes, most likely older people that are going to be financially strapped, and so I agree with trying to find the best way to work with that.
I think we talked today over the phone that in the project we're doing, you don't have any known homes?
Correct. At that water main. None that we know of so far. So we're doing the water main project along Washington Street, North Washington Street, between Burlington and Naperville Road. We estimate about 40 homes. We've surveyed a number of them, and so far, we don't, we didn't finish all of them, but so far, we have not discovered any.
The contractor, though, will be able to verify that when they make the connection to the Buffalo Box and the private service line, they will then know for sure whether there's a lead service line or not.
That's a good point. We'll automatically replace from the new main to the property line, which is where the valve or the Buffalo Box is put, and then we'll know what that service is at that time.
Correct.
If not earlier. But everybody gets a new service up to the property line, regardless of what it is.
Well, I think any of us who have, and I go, we've heard these horror stories at legislative committee, some of the communities like Aurora have thousands of homes that are affected by this particular issue. And we're very lucky, knock on wood, that I think us and some of the other communities are nowhere near as impacted. But the amount of, the cost is really amazing. And so, yeah, just keep us informed, but thanks for all your help with this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anybody in the audience? Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes. Motion passes. Under miscellaneous, I saw some individuals walk in. If, this is a good time, if you wanted to, anybody wanted to address the board, since you didn't, weren't here, you for open forum, you know, now's the time. You're good. All right.
Fantastic work.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I gave you an opportunity. Any other trustee have any?
I'd like to make a comment.
Trustee Barker.
You know, I congratulate Gold Polar on taking advantage of that downtown funding. I'd like to see if we can encourage that now in the spring, to have other businesses down there in the central business district take advantage of that. There's a few that I think need it, but if they would take advantage of that funding, we make it available. It's a great program, and I just wish it was used. So if we could market that a little bit to the chamber and the downtown, it would be outstanding.
Has that ever been opened up to more of the community, as we discussed, about doing?
I thought we were going to.
It's going to be part of your budget discussions when we get to that.
Very good. You guys are on it. Boy, I tell you.
And again, the newer businesses, ones that have been here, aren't really aware of that. And then, as I was talking to Allison about Medicare, she was not aware of that. She wanted to put an awning on her building, so she's probably going to be contacting the village staff to learn more about that.
Yeah, new awning and a cleaned up facade there.
Yeah.
Makes a big impact.
Any other? We do not have an executive session, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Thank everyone for coming. This meeting is adjourned.